Good evening, welcome to the Grandview Heights Planning Commission meeting Wednesday, October 15th. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hawke?
Here.
Commissioner Kascuski?
Here.
Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Hollern?
Here.
Chairman Gentry?
Here.
Mayor Kearns?
Here.
Councilman Panzer is excused. Director Halsey?
Here.
Alex Smith?
Here.
Jordan Selmac?
Here.
Thank you. We have some zombie minutes that just keeps showing up in the, on the agenda from January 28th. Are there any additions or corrections? None. If you haven't had time to go through them yet.
Never seen these.
Well, do we have a motion to accept?
I move to accept the minutes dated January 28th, 2025.
A second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those not in favor say nay.
Approved.
Alright, the January, or the July 16th minutes, any additions or corrections?
Yes, page three, name is spelled incorrectly. Elizabeth. That's it.
Well, pending that correction, I will move to accept the minutes as presented.
My second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those not in favor say nay. Approved.
Thanks for the catch. Alright, anyone planning or think they may speak in front of the commission tonight, please stand, raise your right hand and answer in the affirmative. I swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth. Alright, thank you. Any other changes to the agenda?
There are none.
Alright, let's jump in, the PC case number 12-2025. 1241 Fairview Avenue, Alfred Inc. is the applicant and basically looking at a major site plan review for the modular classrooms on the site that we are at right now. Good, name and address, please, and kick it off.
Well, great, my name's Jay Tadina with Alfred Construction, we're the construction manager, living in Powell.
Mike Raider with Mobile Modular, the building supplier, live in Mentor, Ohio.
Great, well, thanks for having us back, good to see you again. We're here to present the temporary modular classrooms that are going to make way for the demolition and construction of the new Stevenson Elementary School. You know, we appreciated the concept review a few months ago, I think it was in July, and so we've addressed the comments that we've taken down and would love to walk you through the plans for the project and Alex, if you want to start at exhibit seven where the whole site is set in front of you takes place. So, from the comments last time, it was, you know, it was a concern to show the egress walks out of the modular classrooms, those have been identified. It was asked to consider the lighting for the sidewalks as well, those have been identified via downlights that are actually on the temporary classrooms as well. Mayor Kearns and others from the planning commission asked the district to consider switching the orientation of the entrance of the Stevenson Elementary School. It was the standalone building close to the city complex or to the south is the music room that was down by the drop-off for Larson Middle School. After considering that, we agreed with your all's comment and we flipped the entrance, so the entrance is going to be now adjacent to the turnaround right out, right out here in front of, in front of Larson Middle School, so that's reflected as well. We added the distances to the property lines, obviously they're in red and they're very tiny, but you can see those for setback variances. And then Jordan had mentioned showing the lot coverage percentages and those are now shown there in the middle. And I'm just going to keep going, going through the whole, the whole presentation and then we'll do comments at the end. So, on the next slide is our utility plan. To the staff lot towards the bottom of the page, the southeast corner, that's the, there's an existing transformer there. It's gone through engineering with American Electric Power and the aid to construction fees have been paid and so that is, that is settled, that's where the power will be drawn from and it will be poured underneath this road and serve both the complexes. Sanitary is also shown, again, it's kind of small, but it's actually running parallel with where the electric is. Mike, our design builder actually cameraed the sanitary line, the main on Fairview located where Edison Intermediates sanitary connection was and found it and found it to be in good, good condition and it's right under the sidewalk there, so we planned to tap to utilize that and view that as the preferred method for providing sanitary service for the building as well. And similar to last time, we're still showing water and technology coming from this, this building, which would be the southeast corner of Larson and I'll just, I'll just kind of show you. So, both water and technology coming out from here and coming pouring under across to supply technology and fire alarm for, and domestic water for the building as well. Mike, you can just keep, you can add or just let me keep going.
Well, I want to get, the calculations for lot coverage take in account of the high school, the middle school and the property out there. So, the contiguous property except for the city-owned lot and the private lots that are on First Avenue, those are not in those numbers. So, I just wanted to make sure you knew that that was the entire property and we did our best to take in account the asphalt, the sidewalks, the building itself areas. Obviously, there's a little small percentage of air because we're trying to calculate it in a CAD file, but that's generally the, the area before and the area after we add the building, the areas on there. You know, to the comments about boring, you know, we looked at this as, obviously Fairview's a brand-new road, the turnaround in front of Larson is brand-new, the idea of boring is actually a more expensive way of accessing utilities just because of the cost and expertise it takes to do it, but we don't want to damage new work, so this is the, the best procedure, we think, to access utilities and, you know, save the infrastructure that's here that you guys have all just spent money creating, so those are the couple of comments I, that's, that was our process and our thought behind it, so.
Alex, you want to go to the next sheet? So, the next sheet is the civil plan and, you know, had some great feedback from the first meeting, if we're going to, you know, be conscious of taxpayer dollars and use a temporary storm foundation for these temporary classrooms, you know, making sure that we're cognizant of stormwater runoff. And so, on the civil sheet now, you'll see that all of the rainwater from the buildings themselves are going to be piped through downspouts and then actually piped into the storm system at a catch basin location. Additionally, we've added three catch basins to, to catch water runoff, that would be heading towards the modules themselves. I'll just show you quickly, those are located here and here for water that's coming towards the building from this way and probably even right here for water that's coming, coming this way as well. Anything to add to that one?
Nope.
Okay. So, the next sheet is the elevations. Comments from, from last time was, we talked about the downlighting, it's hard to see, they're in yellow, I believe those are, they're in yellow, those are downlighting, they're not on there.
I didn't really show them on there.
Okay, so they will be for our permit plans, but we're going to capture those for, for that and then also to identify wayfinding signage. So, we did add the Stevenson Elementary School banner, those will be located on the north elevation at the, at the main entrance, right between Larson and this building and then also at the corner of Fairview and the drop-off as well. Additionally, the, any doors that are not an entrance, they're going to have a not an entrance sign on that, so there's no miscommunication about where the entrance of the building's at, so those have been added as well as, we have some photos to, to show the finishes of the, the actual modules, but we added a couple of finishes for that as well. The next sheet is a, just the temporary foundation plan, very similar, another, another foundation plan and Mike, this is as much for you as, as anyone else as to what we've installed here in town in the past as well. Next sheet is how, how we, how we get the units onto the site is a big point of discussion too, how we're going to make our way through the city and how we're going to access the site, and let Mike explain that process.
Just, just to the nature of the modules, they're very large, they come, they are pulled, they have their own wheels on them, they're pulled with a semi, they're, the biggest ones here are 14 feet wide and the unit is 70 feet long, when you add the tractor in, we're over 100 feet long. They come with escorts, so it is quite a train when it shows up to the city and just with our experience, it's best if we have a plan and present the plan of where we're coming in. It also helps us or safety forces in the cities to say, this is the plan, we let them know, we let them know when we're coming and we want to get off the road as quickly as possible. Very tight streets around here and we presented two options to the city of the best way to get us off the road and through discussions, we believe the city is allowing us to go through the city park property, that will allow us to get off the road quickly.
Other way, sorry.
Minimal traffic impediment to the area is the goal. We've talked about, we're going to do, probably do some kind of mats to try and keep the damage to the grass down, similar to the mats they use when they build utility infrastructure. We're basically going to build a temporary road on that to keep the damage down, so, but what we will be doing, have to take out one tree and some electrical lighting, electrical that's for holiday lighting, we will safely remove it, we're going to probably demo the tree and then we'll replace it when we're done. We, that's kind of open for discussion, we can replace when we put them in, but we've got to get the buildings out too, so it might mean replacing again, or if you want to wait, we'll replace at the end. You know, that can be the discussion with the building department or any, any other group that, you know, wants to talk about how, how we best do it, but we presented this because we think this is the best access route to get to buildings. That is a true representation of size on the road, so how big they are, so, you know, we'll work with the safety forces in the city to let them know when and how we're coming in and so, we've done it quite often.
And there's, there are 29 of these units and we've coordinated with the city and with the district to say, you know, pick up and drop off, queuing for everyone that's going to be trying to come on to campus and drop off their kids, we're going to stay away from those times, stay away from lunch and, and so we've got a pretty small window, but we're going to work within that window and we plan on delivering up to two a day and it taking three weeks to do, to, to get them on-site.
Roughly when do you anticipate, based on your scope thus far, when do you anticipate that three days starting?
Right, so, we're going to start construction in, in January. There's some, there's some make-ready work and there's some infrastructure work that would happen, so I think right now and there's a schedule on the, the very end of the eight-and-a-half-by-elevens that you can see, I think our delivery window is in February, yeah.
February and early March, yeah.
I can, I can give an exact date for you. Yeah, hopefully, hopefully, yeah, we're actually ready for a good freeze.
Yeah, freeze helps, that's correct.
Right now, they're scheduled for February 6th through February 26th, somewhere around there. No more questions on access, want to talk next about our sorry, one more, I forgot about the slide. So, mentioned just showing what the restoration plan looks like when we leave, definitely we'll be restoring it back to, to what it is now, in fact, we're just planning on right now, having the, the whole grass area that's out here now sodded, so that it's ready for school when, in the, in August of 27th. And then, this is what it looks like during construction, we will fence because they will be in, in school. The blue dots are our fence outline and gate number one is our main access in, in and out of the site. A comment from, from last time was just, you know, what's it look like once you have occupancy, we are going to remove all construction debris, all construction fencing and obviously...
Seed and landscape.
Seed and landscape, yeah, any disturbed areas for, for start of construction or for start of school in, in 2000, August 26th. The next slide, that's where I wanted to talk about pickup and drop-off schedule and Jay's going to help us. Been a lot of discussion around how, how we, how we tack on approach this.
Absolutely. Hi, I'm Jim Buffer, I'm the director of operations for the school district.
Chris Dice, chief technology officer for the school district.
Alright, so we've given a lot of thought to the best way to get traffic in and out and the morning's going to be a critical time. PM, we, we, most of our drop-off traffic, most of our school traffic is in the morning as opposed to the afternoon because in the afternoon, we have so many students involved in after-school activities, we have about 170 kids between the middle school and the elementary who stay after school for the kids' club program and, but the morning is the time that we're particularly concerned about and wanted to make sure we had plans in place. And to support that, we have added seven morning and afternoon stipends to serve as traffic drop-off, pickup people to, to make sure kids are arriving safely. But in terms of the actual start times, oh, I'm sorry, it's right there, thanks, at the bottom. So, currently Stevenson is open from 8:05 to 2:55. We are going to look at a start time of 8:10 with a 3 o'clock dismissal. That's a 10-minute stagger in the morning, so the high school and the middle school get here 10 minutes before the elementary students, they will leave at the same time. We have a, as I said, number of considerations here, that morning stagger, we have the ability to supervise the Stevenson children who arrive early by being dropped off on the Oakland side and being guided to the middle school gymnasium. Next year, the middle school gymnasium will be the elementary gymnasium and the elementary cafeteria, so we're able to have kids stay there in the mornings. And then, the end time, we have about 20% of our parents who have kids both in the elementary or in this complex and so by keeping that end time consistent, we think that will help keep traffic moving, let people pick up their kids and go rather than having a stagger at the end of the day. So, as I mentioned, if there's an 8:00 AM drop-off, they will, for the Stevenson, they'll go to the east circle and go to the middle school gym, if they drop off after 8 o'clock, they can use either traffic circle and go straight to the modular classroom.
Great, so, next are photos of the actual units themselves, we did provide that at the July concept review, so Alex will go through those quickly, just to show, these are the actual units that will be delivered, gives you an idea of finish and one thing that reminded me, a comment from last time was covered, covered walkways between the units and so we did, we did listen to that and that has been incorporated into our plan as well. While you're flipping through, another, another comment from, from the city that we, we work together on is how we're going to handle waste and refuse from the modular classrooms. They will be carted to the 412 buildings dumpster area and the city's been gracious enough to increase their pickup from three days a week to five days a week and then after an initial period, there's going to be an evaluation on whether that's efficient and the school districts says if need be, they'll increase their number of four-yard dumpsters and put a couple in front of the service entrance right there on Oakland. So, here's a couple more pictures of the interior and then, and then the last, the last document or exhibit is just our, our construction schedule and plan, we can see that as well. And I think that's, that's it, so, opening up for, for questions and any comments that you might have.
Yes.
The new site logistics plan, did you ensure it's different than the one we looked at at our staff last week? Didn't have any lay-down fencing in the park area, so it would just be, so now you're going back to wanting to use the park area?
Correct.
We didn't see that, this is new to us.
Okay.
What caused the change?
Well, we didn't want to, we didn't want to assume the ability to use it until we got approval from the city to use it for access for construction, less for construction only, so that's where we'll, we'll be accessing, taking the, the units through that.
Right, but you've got it as lay-down and fencing as well, that's a 15, the 15-day use and then you're done, or is this going to be to the two months of construction, whatever you're going to use the site? Because that, that, we were discussing agreement this afternoon, that changes our thinking on the agreement if you're going to be using it for a longer period of time. So, is this what's happening, not the other plan we saw before?
I was going to ask, after the freeze window, do you think we would?
I mean, we can repair it and, and get out of there, I mean, it does give us a little more room, we already have trucks and equipment and men coming on-site to do work, it does, we don't have a lot of room on this site. Would help us if we need to evacuate out of it, we're going to put down a road in there, temporary roads are taught to get the equipment, trucks, over it with that doing as little damage as possible. You know, those, the roads we're talking about, you know, we'd have to get it, we'd have to do at least a temporary fence whilst there, which is our plan, and then we could pick it up and evacuate the area and repair it right away once the buildings are in place.
Well, that, that just changes our, we talked this afternoon about an agreement and this, this extensive, more extensive use than we thought will probably change our thinking, may change our thinking about the agreement, we'll have to discuss that with the administration, so that's a new.
Can I, just to speak up, if, if you turn your back to the speaker, can you at least state? Oh, no, you don't have to repeat it, but if you could just stay in a closer diameter to the, so it actually picks up the audio?
We can do that.
So, basically what you're saying is, what I was hearing is, you're going to move everything in through the park, get everything set up and then get out, but this makes it look like it's a permanent lay-down yard for the entire project?
Right.
Is that, is that what I'm?
That's what, yeah, that's what he, that's what his question was to us and, yeah, I guess it wasn't intentional to try to slide any, anything, it was, we assumed that for the, at least the construction duration, which was January to May, that the city park may be available to us and if, if not...
Yeah, and we're not, we're not saying it's impossible, I'm just saying this is different than what we've been talking about administratively, now we're looking at extended use, which will probably be cause, call for more repair of the site than we were thinking, it's just the vehicles driving over on the plastic. Now, we're going to talk about piling things up there, parking trucks on it, it's going to be more potential, more potential damage to the site, which is, we'll just have to reevaluate that administratively.
Yeah, okay, understood.
I wanted to make sure that was declared, so we know which way to go, we'll just change our thinking.
Whichever way you elect to go, we will restore it better than we, than, than, than when we left it, we would like to utilize it for the duration of construction, if that's not an option, but it's still an option for just getting those 29 units in, we'll take whatever we can get.
I'll just represent that we, we can discuss that. Yeah, the discussion we had, we have a right of agreement, or right of entry draft agreement, you didn't know this, but knew that it was in the works that we talked about today and our assumption was it was really just for those three weeks to get in and then you'd be done.
Understood.
Now, seeing the lay-down, but just to clarify, this is not the entire school year, this is really truly just the construction until you get it put up in May or whenever that it is and then, then you would abandon that, that area.
Restore, yeah.
Okay, okay, we'll, we'll take that under advisement administratively, I, I don't think that that would affect any of the recommendations that the planning commission, it would be contingent on that agreement anyway, so thank you for clarifying that.
So, you would probably have to do the same thing in reverse during demo and bringing everything down, you'd have to use those areas? So, you'd, you'd put it, would you repair it while it's being used as a school and then you'd have to repair it again after you take everything out?
Correct, that's the plan, yep.
Okay, alright, well, let's, Jordan, let's have you go through your staff report and then it sounds like we'll have some other questions and comments.
Absolutely, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'll just review the, the facts of the case here and highlight some of the items the applicant discussed from the zoning and planning perspective, so just kind of start high level, the property zone, RS2, this is a residential district, as we've discussed in past meetings related to the overall school districts, projects going on, that the size and scale, some of these structures don't necessarily conform with what you would typically expect for these types of lots, especially with the history of the property, originally having been plotted for single-family detached homes and over the years have been a lot consolidated and we have the building that we're in today here, but ultimately, the proposal here fits within the scope and scale of, you know, the surrounding neighborhood and ultimately will be a temporary structure, but I'll review some of the information the city's been reviewing from a plan review perspective as well as the necessary variances that will be required for this site plan to be approved. Next slide just shows the site as it exists today, it's relatively flat and then with the next slide, we have the proposed site plan that the applicants discussed, just a couple of items from a city utility and city department perspective. Currently, the applicant has submitted information related to electric, sanitary, stormwater and this information is currently being reviewed by city engineering team, EP Ferris, some of these items are still going review just to ensure details such as the storm system, which does include the downspout conductor lines tying, or proposed to tie into city stormwater, there's also a couple catch basins proposed following some of the previous discussion at planning commission to ensure this site doesn't have any negative stormwater runoff impacts and the EP Ferris engineering team's going to review this information to ensure there's no overloading of the city's system, ultimately feels comfortable with this moving forward through planning commission's review as any of these details can be handled through administrative review. Same with regarding the fire alarm system as the proposed modular structure will tie into the existing school fire alarm. City school district and city safety forces have been in communication regarding an evacuation plan and again, are comfortable with this moving forward through the planning commission review as this, any details of such could be handled through administrative review. I'll get to some of the staff conditions at the end of the report related to the city park aspect, I'll save that towards the end here and as the applicant did indicate, service department's comfortable with the increase of the number of trips visited to the school. This purpose is to prevent, hopefully, the need to locate another dumpster near this modular unit in the event that five trips a week isn't sufficient, you know, city's willing to work with school district to try to find a amenable approach to this situation in hopes to avoid locating more dumpsters out by the modular units as those would require screening and ultimately wouldn't be great from a community perspective. Potential alternate solution if this proposal doesn't work could be just locating another dumpster within the existing location where those dumpsters are today and just trying to, from a school operation standpoint, just might be a little inconvenient for them to make that work, but this being a temporary structure, some of these inconveniences hopefully can just be worked through some agreements with the city and be well-coordinated in that respect. Ultimately, the site as indicated does require a handful of variances from a Ultimately, the site, as indicated, does require a handful of variances from a zoning hardship perspective. Uh, as previously mentioned, this site is relatively narrow to locate a large structure. Uh, however, with looking at the middle and high school, also having created some, uh, non-conformances to the property from a setback and lot coverage perspective. And not seeming to have created any adverse impacts on the surrounding community. It would be highly unlikely that the proposed temporary modular classrooms would create, apart from maybe some congestion and inconvenience to parents and, you know, children in this temporary structure shouldn't negatively impact the surrounding community. This location is necessary from a functionality standpoint, as there's no other property the school district possesses where this really could be located. With all the other work they have currently ongoing. So from a hardship perspective, this does, you know, meet that, that view criterion and having a hardship to necessitate these variances. I'll just quickly list off what they are, uh, required to have to approve the site plan. Uh, for a side yard setback on a corner lot, uh, requires minimum twenty feet. And they'd have a twelve foot, two inch setback along Fairview. Uh, for a school structure, there's a minimum twenty-five foot setback from property line. And again, they'd have a twelve foot, two inch setback along Fairview. Uh, for a rear yard setback requirement, they're required to have twenty percent of lot depth, not to exceed thirty feet. Uh, the proposed structure would result in a nine foot, nine inch setback. From a lot coverage perspective, cut requires a maximum of forty percent. Uh, information the applicant provided, and we've done kind of some of our own calculations. Appears that the proposed site plan will result in, uh, seventy percent lot coverage. The site does currently have an approximate sixty-one percent lot coverage, so it's already a non-conforming feature. Uh, and the proposal would increase that. Uh, same with parking requirements, as the school district currently does have a variance for parking at this property that has been approved with the construction of these buildings. Uh, so there'd be a temporary parking variance with the addition of these modulators. Uh, school districts indicated that they would work, you know, regulating the number of parking permits for these locations to ensure there's no negative impact to the surrounding community. And ultimately, for the previous stated reasons, we believe that these variances would be appropriate for this use and would be necessary for this use to remain functional for the school district. And we'd recommend approval on those variances. Carry on to the next slide here, just to cover a few other, uh, planning and zoning items. There'd be a couple signs and, uh, wayfinding signs throughout the property to help, you know, students, faculty and parents navigate the property. Uh, there's no issue from a zoning code perspective, the applicant just have to obtain an administrative sign permit. Uh, if there's any issues in that process, we could always recommend they come back up to planning commission. But I don't foresee there being any issue with the simple signage proposed to help with wayfinding on the site. Uh, the applicant has also noted on their drawings that lighting would be downward facing, address, uh, public comments they had received during concept review. And we appreciate that feature being carried forward. Uh, next slide just shows an example the applicant provided of what the modulators would look like. Carrying on to the next slide for, uh, again, we've been in constant communication with the school district and the applicant regarding, uh, drop off. One item to note, I just wanna emphasize that they proposed a ten minute staggering there. And as, uh, city has discussed with the school district, we believe that just, we wanna emphasize constant quality communication with the public, with faculty and with parents as to, uh, what is occurring at this location, just to keep also the city informed with that process. That way, you know, public can be as well informed as possible. And we believe communication will be a key aspect to this, uh, feature on the site, you know, working within the community. Uh, next slide, uh, just kind of highlights some of the images the applicant previously shared related to how the modulators will be brought onto the site and will leave the site. Uh, after review of, um, possible alternatives, this has been determined to be the least impactful to the surrounding community. This will again require quality communication between the applicant, school district and the city to ensure that these are safely brought through the, uh, city's corridors and, you know, loaded through the site. This does result in traversing through the city park there. Thus, the staff recommended condition of obtaining a agreement between the school district and the city for the restoration of this park for both the, after the construction of the modulators, as well as the deconstruction of the modulators, once the use of them has ceased. And the last slide contains the site restoration plan the applicant had previously indicated. Showing that they'll receive water, you know, bring the overall site, uh, back into a better state than it currently exists today. And that would all be part of their, uh, site plan package. To kinda address the conversation before with the agreement, I believe as written, the recommended staff condition would address any, you know, potential negotiation related to the duration in which the loading zone may or may not be located on the city park. I'll just read that verbatim, but either there might be an amendment that you find, you know, appropriate for this or the other conditions. But I'll just read that for the record, the recommended by staff and include the, this rec, this condition of approval. Grandview Heights School District completes an agreement with the city of Grandview Heights regarding the restoration of the city park after construction and deconstruction of the modular classrooms. I believe that would be appropriately covering the bases. Uh, two other recommended conditions of approval include that in the event dumpsters are located, uh, onsite for the modulators, that they'll be appropriately screened as determined by the city and that the site plans are viewed and approved by the city's engineering team. With that said, staff would recommend approval of the site plan as well as the listed variances. If there's any questions on any of these items, I'd be happy to answer them at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Jordan, I appreciate that. Are there any adjacent property owners, uh, community members have any, in the audience that have any questions? All right, turn over planning commission. Tim, you want?
I wasn't here for the first round, so I was trying to read through the minutes.
All right, what do you want, some more time?
Yeah, I'll, I'll speak after you guys speak. I don't wanna double up on some stuff.
Mark, Mark, we'll start, you're in.
Okay. Um, I appreciate all the hard work. Uh, I think, uh, listened to our first round, which is great. Just on some of your pictures inside, um, you've got, you know, toilet room facilities and things. Are they all meeting, I'm assuming it's gonna go through the building department, they meet current ADA standards and stuff?
Yes.
And wouldn't cause any issues for, you know, because things have changed over time? And if these are being reused, they could have metal ADA, but not necessarily current ones?
Yes, actually, both restroom units are relatively new. And they are, um, they have handicapped facilities in the restrooms. Not every toilet is considered a handicapped.
Correct.
Okay.
Because they're gang.
They're gang, that's correct. So you always have the minimum requirement, so you have one toilet that has the full ADA area with all the vertical grab bars, horizontal grab bars.
Meets it for, uh, the most current stringent ones of that. The signage, um, you know, explain where you're putting them. Um, assuming that that'll go through separate review and approvals. And it'd just be nice if it's in keeping with other signage, even though it's gonna be on the building versus, you know, on a plant and stuff. The, uh, lay down area, I think, as we discussed earlier, it's happening a couple times. So thank you for explaining all that in more detail. Just, you know, the only concern is that it's, uh, once the buildings are in place, that it's usable around it and cleaned up and, uh, ready for, like it's brand new. And then when you tear it down, it's the same. Lighting, I think you've explained it. Uh, it'd be just nice to, you said it will be on the final documents for the city to review, that it will be necessary. Uh, the covering, um, I think you showed within the documents, the area's being covered. What type of covering is that? Is it like a, it's a, you know, if it rains, you won't get wet, but it's open on the sides, it looks like?
Plan is, it's a metal canopy, a metal deck, um, and they have what they call integral gutters that bring the water down through the posts. And, you know, you know, the sides are open, that's correct.
So some of the kids might go from one unit to another with their coats off during winter, but it's a quick run, but they.
That's the idea.
Keeping the ice down and safety, uh, because it's still open on the sides. I don't know if the building department has an issue with that, or, you know, it's something to consider, I think, when final drawings are reviewed.
The discussion, the discussion with the fire department, technically connecting the buildings makes it too large. But we've agreed that the wood decking and the metal cover over would not increase the fire hazard for the temporary use. So we're gonna look at tweaking the stuff of those without requiring pressure and connections minimal construction.
Just, the only concern is, is keeping maintenance on it for winter conditions of ice and stuff like that. Then, uh, I think that's it for right now, might something come up?
Thanks, Mark. My questions are mainly just logistics and from a delivery standpoint, where are the units coming from?
Uh, they are in storage, um, twenty-seven of them are in our storage lot in Norwalk, Ohio.
In Norwalk, okay.
Yep, so they'll be coming down two fifty to seventy-one, then they have to go.
Around two seventy to?
They have to go on two seventy. I, I know, I think they can come around through Hilliard and come that way, then they'll pick up thirty-three and come in. But I think they, you can't, I cannot go down seventy-one past two seventy, the bridge is too low. So they have to go on two seventy.
Gotcha.
So sometimes they make us go the long way around. So, so it's, it's approximately a two and a half hour trip. We're limited to a nine AM start, uh, off our lot. Um, so we, we expect them here before noon. Occasionally, we do have problems, you know? Um, I've alerted the transport company that if we do have a problem, we might have to hold them on thirty-three, which is plenty wide to where they can pull over and wait until we've cleared dismissal and traffic's calmed down and then we can bring them in, so.
And by bringing them in, is there a some, assumed number per day?
Right now, the plan is two per day.
Two per day?
Yes, that's the plan.
That gives you enough time to be on property after eight o'clock? Well, obviously it would be since you're leaving after nine, so you get onsite at noon, enough turnaround time to get out before three?
Yes, the, the truck should only be here approximately forty-five minutes to get dropped in, off and out. So.
Okay.
The, the actual semis. They'll drop them, we can move them around with equipment that we have onsite, uh, skid steers. We have the special equipment that picks them up. So if we have any issues, we, we have equipment here, but get them off the trucks, get the escorts and get them out of town.
And will the, thanks, and will the schedule only be workdays, Monday through Friday?
Correct.
Yeah, um, so if they miss a day, then the schedule obviously, because we're doing the full fifteen, fourteen workdays, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And, and how tight is the overall schedule if we miss a day?
Yeah, um.
Because of weather, et cetera?
I've taken, I've, I've taken your, your guidance on this and, and the five month schedule for this is, is.
Large project like this, once the buildings are all here, it takes us about eight weeks to finish them. That includes all the site work, that includes the decks, the skirting, getting the power turned on, getting the water all up and running. You know, it's more difficult in the winter because there's things I can't do until the power's on. And get, so getting the power on is, is critical. We have a nice situation here to where the infrastructure is generally there from AEP, so that's always a plus. Uh, they have very little work here to do. We have all the work, so I can control the equipment when it's coming. And we are far enough ahead right now that we can order equipment now, uh, and it'll be available when we need it in March. So, um, that's a, a bonus of planning ahead. Generally, my industry is not planned ahead.
Yeah.
Okay, my industry is a, uh, last resort industry. And they get to that point, they're, everybody's in an emergency and they don't like hearing that it takes eight weeks now to get electrical equipment. So, um, but we, we've planned ahead to get to this point so that, you know, it should go pretty smooth.
Gotcha, and so in essence, starting March first, thereabouts, uh, gives us through the end of April. So we've got a, a monthish leeway, uh, roughly.
Little bit of buffer and, um, I mean, the, the, the most important thing for, for me is getting Stevenson evacuated, you know?
Right.
You know, moved out of it so that we can, we can make our schedule for the construction.
Right, 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 no, it's a, it's a domino effect, I get it.
Yeah, we're gonna be, we're gonna be challenging Mike and team to, to make sure that we meet our, our schedule commitments.
And I've also let him know that, and I can let you guys know that. The way we work with these school buildings is, I know he has an aggressive schedule to get Stevenson built. The idea is, is these are your buildings until you're done with them. Meaning, if he says we might not make it, we don't just come in here when the lease is up and tear them down and say, see ya!
Yeah.
Okay, so they stay until he says we're good, get them out of here. So if he's running behind on Stevenson and you have to open school here, I know, but if, they will be here. So, I understand, but I'm telling, you know, I tell my customers. I'm in the school business, okay? And they, they're theirs until they're not, until you're done with them.
Great, thanks very much, that's all I had.
Yep.
Thanks, Jordan. Tim?
Uh, yeah, I have a few questions, uh, and really comments. Um, I keep reminding myself that this is a temporary situation. And when I review it, I keep reminding myself of it, it's a temporary situation. But I also know that as an architect, I have the ability to probably be a little more patient about that than maybe some of our residents would be. So the comments I have today probably are not mine, but what we might hear from the community. I really, in relationship to the, um, variance requests, I don't really have any issues and concern for safety with any of the setback requirements. And, um, lot coverage in an urban condition is fine, as long as we're addressing the stormwater, which you've addressed. The other thing I wanted to say is, as I reviewed this in preparation for today, it was like, check, 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 everything we had talked about. Not ev- not everything, but most of the stuff we had talked about, you had addressed, which is very positive. There's, uh, three things I really wanna talk about. So, um, maybe I missed this, but, um, I know you have a site restoration plan as part of the, we take it away and we go back and fix it. But you also just told us you're gonna move this in in February. And, um, one of my questions is, what are you going to do with the disturbed adjacent areas to make them not muddy? Period, that would be my question.
Like while the, while the modulators are there?
Yes.
And construction's over?
Yes.
We're gonna, we're gonna seed them.
Uh-huh.
The good thing is, uh, that we're gonna have occupancy in May and, and school won't be back on until, till August. But we are gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna seed them so that they're still lawned.
You're gonna seed them and is there a watering, um, schedule? Or is the district gonna water the, so it actually grows?
Uh, we'll have a, we'll have a maintenance plan.
Okay.
You know, we typically include a sixty day maintenance plan, so.
Okay.
I'd love to show you where these buildings came down from six weeks ago. I got grass that high right now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they're very happy.
Well, they might have better soil than we do. Okay, so that's one of the big issues I think we have, because if we, I understand returning it at the end to what it was and trying not to damage things. But I also know, um, I've seen the people that drive these trucks, they're not, you know, these are not carpenters doing woodworking. Um, so that you might have damage on the site. And I just wanna make sure that all of those things are addressed, so that when we have kids coming, they feel they're not flopping through mud. Uh, okay, let's talk a little bit about parking. So there's a reference in here, probably this is more for the district to answer. So, um, uh, we seem to always talk about parking, I wish we didn't have cars, we live in Grandview and didn't have bus systems, right? Kids should be coming here on a scooter. Uh, but we do have a lot of cars and I had two kids that went through Grandview and they drove one block to, to, uh, to school. Which I don't understand, but that's what they do. Maybe I wasn't a good parent, but, um, what are the parking counts currently in this, um, east property, uh, parking lot? And how many additional people are we bringing to it? And what's the strategy for dealing with the people who are parked there now?
I, I knew the count when we built it in two thousand twenty-three, um, but I'd, I'd have to get that from the school district. I know that there are forty-nine additional staff that are parking in there.
Coming, as part of this thing.
We have either a lot that's on Fairview. If you come by during the school day, a lot of those spots that are south are student spots who don't want to park there. They choose to park over by the stadium on, on the streets. If you go by there, there, there are more spots typically on an average day open in that lot than we have at Stevenson. We are going to reduce student parking, which is already reduced, for the, during the construction. So we'll have less assigned spots for students to create more spots for staff and visitors.
But what will be the ratio? So we're being asked to approve a parking variance, and I know that whenever the original project was done, there was a variance offered to allow a reduction in the required parking spaces. So now we're going to reduce them again through another variance, so. I guess I'll just leave it at this because you're probably not gonna be into it. To me, my, I think it's really important that the district create a very clear plan of we're gonna have this many spaces and we're gonna have this many spaces and a communication plan so that people in the community understand what we're doing. And then in terms of the parking and all that logistics, there's this diagram here with kids that are smiling and whatever. So I didn't understand the Stevenson Elementary pickup and drop-off that's located on Fairview. So you're encouraging people in the language to come around the drop-off loop and drop your student off there? And why are we doing it out here then, too?
Yeah, there's a lay-by there.
There is?
Yes.
So. Yeah. I mean, yeah, it's not big, and what I'm concerned about is, I think we want to encourage the kids to be back here. We don't want to encourage them to bring them out by the traffic, especially at this age. So I would be much more comfortable if we said, this is the pickup and drop-off back here in the loop. This says LMS SE drop-off and pickup?
Yes.
So if we had that as a drop-off and pickup, the, the younger children are going to be safer being dropped off there than out along Fairview. So I could see kids darting out across Fairview because their mom just came and turned right on Fairview and is heading north, and she's in a hurry and she doesn't want to turn around, and they just want to swing through the parking lot or something, you know, like, I can see some issues with it, so I think maybe the drop-off strategy is not totally thought out. And may, that, maybe that's not in my purview as a planned, uh, planning guy, but I do think it contributes to our, the potential congestion which the community members will not be happy about in relationship to parking and the children's safety. And I honestly can't believe I'm talking about parking this much because I'm usually not a big, like, we have to have tons of it. But I think people consider this an inconvenience. No offense, the buildings are ugly. You're sending your kid to a place that's not beautiful, and you're paying lots of money in taxes. And you have, if you have a little hiccup in relationship to the logistics of getting your kid, that's what the parents complain about the most. So I just think as a district, you need to be very mindful of that.
May I ask a question on the, on the parking? When you said you were looking for the numbers on the parking, are you looking for just the raw number of spaces or are you looking for the allocation?
The allocation. So you have a certain number of fixed spaces over here, and we have a certain number required by the zoning code. And you are, the, the zoning code would require forty-eight spaces and were to be added, is that right? The zoning code would require forty-eight spaces to be added?
Yes, it's. Two, two per classroom is required by the zoning code?
Yeah, so the zoning code requires forty-eight spaces to be added, and there's no parking being added. So you have to help us understand how the forty-eight are being accommodated? Or are there ten being accommodated? Or are there forty being accommodated?
And, and as the interesting part of it is, as Chris mentioned, that south end of the parking lot during the day is virtually vacant. There might be, of those forty-some spots at that end, there might be eight kids parking there. And other kids have those parking passes, but they park on the streets already. And so I, I, I understand your question perfectly. I don't think it will create any additional issues for neighbors in terms of parking because the kids are already not parking there. The other thing, just the, the little happy people on there, those aren't kids, that's our beautiful, those are our adults.
All, all the volunteers.
There, yes, and there's, and if you look at the very top of the high school at Oakland and First, we actu, or Third, I'm sorry, we actually have an adult there monitoring traffic as well that we've added for next year.
Yeah, that's good to know. That's really good to know. All right, so back to the parking.
Yes, sir.
I think I can support approval tonight, but I would say, the, my advice to the district would be to say, we're gonna have accommodation of however many staff, many people we need here, and we're gonna have these, and the students that don't park there are gonna be officially told they're not parking there or something like that.
Yeah, that'll be well communicated.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Um, my last comment has to do with bike racks. So are we, do we have any bike racks on the site?
Yeah, we, every corner of the building, both middle school and high school, has multiple bike racks. It's, I'm astounded, we've at, after we built the buildings, we added additional bike racks because so many kids ride their bikes. So they are, we have a bunch of racks and they're full. We do not have bike racks at Stevenson, and, and part of that was a traffic study that was done saying at, at that age group, that probably wasn't the best street to have kids riding bikes to school. But, yeah, we have plentiful bike racks for the, for the middle and high.
But to the, to that point, I mean, more kids, I'm, I would imagine will ride.
To here.
Up here. Are there potential spots for them if they're already full?
In terms of Stevenson? We'll, we'll take a look at that. That's a good question, yes.
Now, you, so you just said you're gonna add some bike racks?
If we need to add bike racks, we will add bike racks.
Okay.
We will, we will take that under advisement.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, what a really good outcome of this would be if students saw the potential to scooter or bike rack or something, just from, or ride their bikes and reduce the amount of parents who are driving for purposes of community building and health and walkable streets and all that stuff. So I think that would be really good. Okay, so you're gonna fix the parking strategy, logistically, and, okay, so I do have one point of clarification. So my colleague over here mentioned, will there be a separate signage review for this? Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, well, in general, I kind of agree with everyone else here, and pretty much in support of the plan. I think, seeing, reading the minutes and seeing the comments and updates, appreciate all of that. I do have one or two things. One is kind of a, a point maybe for the administration in this lay-down and fencing area. From a planning perspective, I think it's safer for our kids and people accessing the site to allow that to be used for construction activity if it's fenced and protected. That, that way, there's just more room. You have less vehicles and stuff on the streets in, in times where students may be outside at recess. It just gives our construction team a little bit more room to like, so I, so in the light of that, I, I'm very supportive of it. I just think to your point, needs repaired, right, and we need to know what it is. And then I really do agree with Mr. Hawk's point here. I, I have a kid that goes to school where we have to drop off at one point, and there's, yeah, there's a line, there's traffic in those windows. But what it does is it keeps every kid not from crossing traffic. And, yeah, if you're a little bit late, you're waiting in line, but it's managed by all of these safety volunteers we have. And I think that is a very successful outcome versus having, using this pull-off lane and complicating it. So I, I do think that needs to be made logistically, because I was trying, and then to the point about parking. I think it's better that it's more for staff than students in this temporary use or maybe permanently on the, the numbers because one of the things I was questioning is, no one's gonna walk all the way north from this parking lot, cross and then come back down to this elementary entrance, this drop-off, so at which point then we have another crosswalk that we need to manage. And so I think to the extent that we can, can lock down on how that operates is a better outcome for the city in the school district, so. That's all I had, Jamie, if you have anything.
I, I wanna start saying I appreciate the application and how you addressed comments. Made it clear that you were answering, addressing them, so instead, a lot of times we have to dive back in the minutes and, and kind of reviews, I appreciate that. Thank you. You've been through this before, right?
I was about to say.
With the, with the drop-off schedule, and this is definitely more, more for the school district. I mean, what flexibility do you have, you know, as, as the school year starts up and there's some, you know, hey, we need to move those times, is that, is that possible, or is that, can it?
We, we only have about ten minutes of wiggle time, which we've kind of allocated already. We do have, we do have a contract, a teacher's contract, so we can't change the school day.
That's what I was wondering.
It is what it is, but we do, we, we already wiggle the time a, a little bit, giving the elementary a ten-minute later start.
Yeah.
Those families that have, I think, I think we did the math, it's like high twenties, about thirty percent of families have, have kids in both buildings. And that changes given, given the year, but we figure those families will drop off probably at the same time. If they're dropped off early, the elementary students can go over to the, the gym over here before school. And then the elementary parents can drop off a few minutes later to let that clear out. If you've ever been here, you know, at the end of the school day, beginning of the school day is always a little tighter. End of the school day, it's packed for five minutes.
Yeah.
At, at three oh seven, the street's clear again. So, you know, it's, it's a very short window. I think we're, we're very lucky, we're very grateful that we, we have that, that we're not dealing with literally a thousand kids being picked up, so.
Yeah, I assume there wasn't much flexibility. Once you set the time, it's probably, it's going to be what it's gonna be.
It is.
Okay.
But to, to go back to that, what is new this year and really big is adding those stipends for those, those staff members. So we will have staff members out on the street, and, and we don't have that as, on this facility at all, we don't have that really right now.
After school, at the middle school, we do right now, but, yeah, but it'll actually be a total of nine people.
Yeah, on the block.
Good. Okay. The, so getting the, the buildings in, you know, I, I appreciate repairing the park, but I'm, I'm, I'm probably more concerned about the street and the curb. I mean, is there, is there ramps or something put in place to get over?
We do have some steel ramps that we use to get up on the curbs. You know, we, we've discussed using steel plates over the sidewalk to try and save the sidewalk. If it gets damaged, we're gonna replace it.
Yeah, okay.
And we've got to keep it safe.
Yeah.
So if it gets damaged and it heaves, we might have to rip it up and put gravel down until we can put concrete back in. But we keep it safe, we keep it clear, you know, because we know it's, it's a walking school district, so.
Yeah, and then like the, on the asphalt itself, like the spinning of the.
Yeah, that, yeah, nah, that doesn't do too much damage.
Okay. And then, so will that be a, a working gate the entire time? Like a construction entrance?
Well.
Entire time?
It depends, it depends on what we were able to work out with, with the city.
Okay.
Definitely during the.
Module.
Yeah, I'm saying beyond that, okay, okay. You know, again, I feel like you addressed a lot of the comments I had previously. I would just really stress the, the communication with the city. I mean, there's just so much going on here, and I, I can't imagine things are agreed upon between the city and, and the school district and the construction firm, and those decisions making it their way down to the guy working on the site and one day that just pulls a truck in and parks somewhere, you know, so I just cannot stress enough the, because this goes back to, to Mr. Hawk's comments about all this work and all this preparation, and then there's still the perception of the public that sees a truck that just pulls up on the sidewalk one day to drop something off, and it's like, you can't do that, so. So I can't stress that enough, but that's.
Well, for what it's worth, we take a ton of pride in being a, a really valued partner in the district. We're really proud that we're back after building this building that we're in right now, and so if it means anything, you know, us being an advocate for them and, and, you know, kind of our own, a brand, their, their own brand and their communication to the city and, and the message that we send by how we build and, and how we, how, what our curb appeal looks like in construction is really, really important.
Yeah.
Appreciate it, and it will be noted, and, and we're gonna do a good job.
Thanks, I expect that out of Alfred in my, in my experience, so, thank you.
And if I can, and if I can add anything to that, I'll tell you, when Alfred contacted our, our company, the company they first contacted has been sold to this larger company. The, the company that got purchased is named Emod LLC, two partners, I was one of them, my other partner, he's still involved with the new company. We did a different take to mobile classrooms in Ohio than our industry. And we sold the education market in Ohio on we take care of the whole project. I think that's what Alfred enjoyed to hear that we were there to take care of everything. We were, we plan ahead, we communicate, we do drawings. My competition wants to drop the building off and run away and leave it up to the customer to figure out how to get kids in it. So, you know, that's selling our, you know, the company that was sold is still involved with the new company, and we're here, and I'm gonna be here on this job from start to finish, so. Just trying to help the district feel comfortable that they picked the right partner.
Appreciate that. Mayor, you have any comments?
This has been a very communicative, well-thought-out, well-planned and process, and you've been extremely responsive to all of our, we have had at least three big, big meetings with all of our safety and engineering and building and zoning stuff with this, with every player. So we appreciate the district's engagement in this. We know you're taking it seriously, and, you know, I think this is, you know, probably as good as it's going to get for a very, very tricky temporary school year. And it will require patience from the community, and all of us are going to hear negative feedback, and that's, that's, you know, to be expected, I think. I really appreciate adding the seven paid staff members. I think that will make the drop-off go smoother. And the only comment, and we've had a lot of discussion about the drop-off, the only comment to perhaps consider is if you, you know, because you're adding three hundred and fifty-ish kids, it, one of our concerns has been the capacity of Fairview to handle that constant stream and people slowing down, and we cannot block the, the right-of-way. It is a through-street only from the north, so I think we do anticipate what was contemplated here where people come through the circle and then pull in the lay-by, and then somebody pulls up beside them and, and then the whole road's blocked. So it is something we're, we're going to have to keep in communication on. It may be a consideration that you split and have grades, you know, two and three go up Oakland and K, K one comes up Fairview, but it may be something you have to play by here, but we appreciate the thought that was put into that and cooperation with, with the city.
We appreciated your suggestion of flipping the building because after we looked at it, it made so much more sense than what we had planned, so.
And we, and as, as Mr. Cuskew, as he said, that if you can get the kid to hop out and move along, that's what we want. But we all, we all see all kinds of behavior, so. Yeah. But thank you.
Thank you.
And Jay's got the hardest, you know, you're gonna be up at night trying to get this thing done by August fifteenth or whatever, probably August first.
All right, commissioners, any other questions, comments, thoughts, or? How do you want to proceed?
Well, I will make a motion to approve en masse the variances as requested, without naming them all. But I will make a motion to approve each of the variances as presented.
Should we approve the site plan separately and then approve the variances as a whole, or just, is there any sort of guidance here from staff? Sorry to interrupt you, John.
No, that's, that's a good point.
Okay. All right.
Hi, you can just read through.
Yes, all right, yeah.
Do you want to do the staff recommended conditions?
Yeah.
The conditions that they recommend are here.
Seven, six.
Yeah. So I would just make sure you mention that if you're, if you want to do it. So I just make sure you mention that if you're, if you wanna do it in one motion.
I will do it in one motion.
I would, I would mention this major site plan review and variances.
I propose approval of the major site plan, uh, of the site plan, subject to the Grandview High School District completing the agreement with the City of Grandview Heights regarding the restoration of the city park after construction and the deconstruction of the modular classrooms. In the event that a new dumpster is located on site, it shall be appropriately screened as determined by the city and the proposed site plan is reviewed and approved by the engineering team of the city. I will also, uh, move for approval of all the variances as presented.
I second.
Okay. Commissioner, Commissioner Kaszkuski?
Yes.
Commissioner Evans?
Yes.
Commissioner Hallard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hawke?
Yes.
Chairman Gentry?
Yes.
Approved.
Nice job, John. Thank you all for your, for your work on this. I realize you're just getting started, so, thank you. Okay, just, uh, one item of other business. The, uh, report that was provided as part of the, uh, First and Grandview District Plan. Um, I'd say, I, I don't know if we have much we, we to discuss regarding it.
Nobody's here from the historical society, is that right?
I don't think so, no.
I have a number of questions.
I just wanted to say, I, I thought it was very interesting to, to read through, so, I, I liked it, so.
Yeah, I have, um, I have some questions for the city administration, actually. So, um, when we approve the district plan, um, I'm foggy as to whether or not we approved it contingent upon, uh, historic review.
No. It was, it was approved, I, I believe it was the same meeting where you were essentially considering it for approval and the, the historical society came in and said, we're going to be providing a report. So we basically modified it to account for, they will be providing a report. It didn't, it, it was noted, I guess. They've now provided a report. We wanted to formalize a process so that this, this report was presented to and considered by the planning commission in, I guess, the context.
Yeah, so, um, I, um, I am, um, I don't know how to say it. I don't think the timing on the release of the report is good in relationship to our approval. Um, I have lots of questions about the criteria, uh, for the decision-making. Um, is there a professional that's been consulted that's looking at the historic integrity of these buildings? And also their viability for adaptation or long-term viability? Um, the report, uh, what I read in it was there was research that had been done related to the historic use of the properties. And there was a consideration by, um, the historic society utilizing some, um, federal guidelines that are rather loose, uh, to determine whether or not they felt the buildings had historic merit. A, a lot of the, uh, things that we approved in the plan are only gonna be successful if some of the buildings that were deemed as highest priority are able to be removed. And, um, I, um, questioned the process because I think if we were looking at it from a standpoint of all aspects of what you would determine for historic landmark status or more significant preservation criteria, uh, we might have a different, um, outcome. So I worry that we have, um, a, um, a volunteer, I don't wanna be too harsh, but a volunteer group, a society of people who are interested and passionate about this issue making, um, recommendations to the city that are, um, without a lot of, uh, clarity in terms of their research process or the criteria that they utilized. Um, so I am skeptical, uh, of the report for that reason.
I would also like to add, that was my initial take. There are so many buildings there considered significantly contributing to Grandview that, for whether it was a former use or a well-liked doctor. And I just, I would prefer to have more professional context when reviewing something to see whether resources and effort should be made. I don't wanna slight the rea- the passion that went into it or how it, how at the time it, it improved our, our area or had a place in our, our community. But I do think it challenges the plan in a way that I'm inclined to say is, is not very successful and, and lacks merit as well. So that was my initial thought. And some of these elements that you spoke to, Tim, are like, I just tore down a few buildings in a historic district and we went through and we identified like items within the building that were historically significant, like a hand-hewn beam that you can't really find. And we salvaged those pieces and moved them to a place, but the building went 'cause it's been changed thirty-seven times. It's dilapidated. To make way for something better for the community. So I would like that level of conversation to be successful. And I think if they were here, I would challenge them to do that. So I want that on the record.
Yeah, and I'll cite an example from my professional history. Um, our firm, uh, probably twenty years ago renovated, uh, for the diocese, um, the Our Lady of Victory, um, campus. And as part of that, there was a consideration for a, um, structure on the site that had been used as a school. And, um, the diocese was interested in creating a community-based space that would provide, um, fellowship and, um, support for, um, their congregation. Um, there was a professional, uh, third-party historic preservation expert who was hired, who wrote a very, uh, long opinion about it, which allowed the diocese and the Village of Marble Cliff and whoever made the decision, uh, to make a decision to allow it to be demolished. And we did exactly that. So if you go in the Our Lady of Victory Parish Center, there are, um, materials that were from that school that were captured and put in there. But I don't think anybody in the community would argue that that building has not been an asset to the community, even though we lost the other one. Because, um, and, and because it is, uh, it's a very important space now because we don't have a lot of basic, like, event-oriented space. Um, so that's the, um, context that I'm coming from. I mean, I'm also working on, um, a project that's funded through, um, um, uh, Jobs Ohio to renovate buildings in, um, Athens and in Marion that are historic buildings. And it's, it's not as simple as doing some research. I'm not trying to, I, I, I have to be careful because I do, honestly, this is what I do. I appreciate their perspective. But I also know that there's a lot that goes into it. And the timing of it in relationship to our approval brings question into the validity of our plan, which I believe we're trying to, um, communicate to the, uh, residents that the plan that we approved is the direction to go. We adopted a master plan.
No, I, I, I would totally agree. I mean, I think it's, it's, it's an opinion piece, um, by passionate people, uh, on a topic. Um, as long as we're not referencing this opinion piece in anything we do going forward, I, I take it as, here's some information provided by community members. Um, so to Tim's original question, as long as we don't have to reference this in anything we do going forward, other than we know it's out there as, as an opinion piece by, uh, a group of individuals, we may or may not have issue with some of the recommendations. I don't even wanna refer to the document unless we have that full-on discussion about the document. So I, I would prefer, you know, when we come to a, uh, analysis of a project, uh, we're not requested to refer to this document at all. And, and hopefully we don't, we don't need to.
Yeah.
Other than in answering questions if we have from the community members at that time.
On the other hand, that is a piece that is now out there. And when it comes time for redevelopment of any specific property, um, while I agree with you guys totally, uh, I think it doesn't hurt whoever's on the commission at that time when something is being developed to say, okay, this was out there, you know, you know, we can look at that because it is brought out there. It doesn't have to be a prime consideration because of your, uh, what you've indicated. But, um, I think it's still real. Um, you know, it's, you know, there could be one of the houses, for instance, along Grandview that we're like, it's, doesn't belong there anymore. It's not adding the value. It's, you know, just because it's a piece of history, it has not a lot of historic merit other than who had lived in it. But then again, you could say this is somewhat important. Is there a way for the developer to move the house or whatever? It doesn't mean it should stay there. Uh, it's not going to be right for the fabric anymore. And, um, and it may be, well, we just take a piece of it. Or, uh, you know, those are things that we can challenge the people developing the property to consider it and bring what they feel is important, um, and what's not, and we can agree at that time or not. Um, but I think really the plan is saying how to get the best value out of the property along that area and where it should be growing. Um, and change does happen and needs to happen for us to stay viable and competitive and, and offer the best services to our community. And having an older home in the middle of that isn't necessarily the right opinion anymore. And, um, so those are decisions to be made down the road when development plans are brought to us to look at.
Yeah, yeah, to your point. I mean, it's good information to have. As, as an opinion piece with, backed with some, some real data.
Right.
And the, uh, only other thought I had in relationship to it, um, uh, is whether or not the city, um, we have guidelines that are in place for, um, plan review and, uh, but we do not have a, um, a design review commission. We don't have a historic resources commission. Um, other cities do, and you have to go through commission processes to get approval and review. And, um, so, um, when I reviewed the document, what was super helpful actually is it reminded me of, um, you know, the, the guidelines, by the federal guidelines suggest anything more than fifty years is potentially able to become a landmark. So the bank building here, that, um, if you had asked most people on the street, they'd be like, there's nothing historic about that. It's actually a mid-century modern, um, piece of architecture that was done in the sixties and it's now probably eligible for historic landmark status. And I think that would be a very controversial discussion. Uh, it might be worthy of us to consider, um, the implications of a growing building stock within the community having, um, potential historic, um, discussion related to it. And, um, if you have rules in place, it could, becomes less about the emotion and it becomes more about the, the ordinance. Um, and so just something to consider.
Alright, thank you. We're adjourned.